Stick around and we'll get right to it.
Okay, so before we jump into this, just a little bit of what to expect. This is me preparing for another tutorial video. But a lot of guys have said they want to see more of the behind the scenes process. So I'm going to give this a test and see how well it is received. If you're just looking for the tutorial video, I will leave a link to it penned as the first comment below this video and that way you can see the condensed polished version of it. But literally this is just me trying to work my way through. Make sure that I know exactly what I'm going to do before I do the finished polished video. So this video won't be as polished. There's going to be maybe some noises in the background like you might've just heard a radio going off, things like that. This is literally just me in a work session here. So we'll be using the Yezu FT 65R for this build and we'll be using the Mobilink. I already have those connected and I have set my output or I'm sorry, my input audio levels and I've set my output verify that the PTT is working. So I don't run into any issues there. So let's see, where do we want to start with this? Actually, I need to make that screen a little bit larger for you guys. So let's jump up to maybe 15 or 16 point font should work for us. Oh yeah, that's a little better to see. These videos will not be as edited as my normal videos either, but I'll try to talk through exactly what I'm doing. Now, the first thing I'm going to need to do is I need to pair that Bluetooth TNC device, the Mobilink TNC with this computer. So let's search and see if we can see it and if we can get it paired up. Now pairing is only part of the process. So yep, we do have it there. So let's just go ahead and we'll mark that device as trusted. And then let's see, right click and connect. Cannot remember how to connect to a device on this computer device. And by the way, guys, I'm using the new WoE computer. I've got 7.3 Linux loaded up with a few applications that I normally use. Oh, interesting, the Bluetooth device just went away. I've got 7.3 Linux loaded up and I think the only application we're going to need to install really is going to be Yak. Let's hit the search. Okay, so it found it again. And how do I connect to this? Not that. Maybe I just need to trust it. And oh, there it is, create pairing. I don't know why it's in the shape of a key. That made me think of, yeah, so it did say connected and immediately it says disconnected. That's kind of what I expected. It's very similar to the way this runs on the Pi. When you connected it basically on the Pi, it says no service is found. On this one, it just connects and disconnects. But that should be all we need to do because we've created the pairing and we've told it to trust the device. So let's go ahead and jump back to the terminal and let's run HCI tool scan, I believe. And let's see if we can capture. I'm looking for the MAC address for the, for the Mobilink. Sometimes you have to run the scan a couple of times. It won't find it. This time it happened to find it right away. Now I cannot remember the command we need to use, but I know that I do this with Pat menu. Someone go over to my Pat menu files and let's scroll down here and see if I can find this particular file. All right, it's not pairing, so I don't need the Mobi pair. I think it is in this one. So let's say open with the text editor and that should let me find. Let's see, let's do a search for RF com. And yep, here's my information here that I'm looking for. So we're just going to copy that. We won't use exactly that command, but that gives me enough data that I can work with that. Now, one thing I didn't do that I should have done in the very beginning is I should have opened a text editor. And oh, I've already got one open goofy. Let's create a new document right here. So new document, so Yak is installed. Next we paired with TNC. And then we need to get the RF comm connection working. I think that should be all we need to do. Let's, yeah, so I'm going to just leave that sitting there. I've got that command copied. So now let's go ahead and go back to the terminal window. Let's paste that in and then we're going to modify it. We don't need the dash A, that's for something else. And actually, okay, so there's two different ways you can run RF comm. You can bind or you can connect. In this particular instance, I'm going to use the connect. That way it'll give me an option to disconnect as well. If you use the bind, there is a way to cancel that out. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but we're not going to use that for now. We're going to use connect. Now, the other thing from the command that I saw was I believe we just need the MAC address. Oh, and this is a TNC 3. So we first, let's copy this MAC address. Copy and paste. Now, the TNC 3 is a little weird. It's different from the 2 and the 4. With the 2 and the 4, you could work just with this command here. If I try that right now though, it's going to fail. It'll connect and probably disconnect all at the same time. Of course, it is going to ask for my pseudo password. Let's try that. Yeah, you can see that it connected right here and then immediately disconnected. And this was one of those frustrating things when I was first playing with the Mobilink TNCs. The TNC 3 is odd because it uses channel 6. You can see right here, it attempted to pair on channel 1. And that doesn't work with the TNC 3. Again, it works with the 2 and the 4, but not the 3. So to do that, we're going to, after the MAC address, we're going to give it a space and a 6. And that should give us a good connection. Yep, so now you can see that it connected on channel 6 and then it's waiting for us to hang up. Now, we don't want to hang that up right now. We want to leave it. So let me close that Mobilink script that I had open. We'll keep our notes open in the background. And let's go ahead and start working with Yak here. So we'll give that a second to open up. And nope, I don't need any help configuring it. Let's just see what we've got already loaded in here. I think I have played with Yak in the past. Yeah, obviously I have because I've got a map in there. Now, I don't know how, I'm going to zoom out a little bit. I'm just kind of curious as to how much map I've got loaded on here. Still got that much. Let's see, we'll back up a couple of more zoom levels. And let's just see what we've got going here. Okay, so yeah, I've got a little bit of Kentucky. I've got most of West Tennessee. It doesn't look like I have all of East Tennessee and I got some of North Alabama. I don't remember how much I downloaded. Let me show you guys real quick if you want to download maps. I'm going to go over to file and open street map and download pre-imported tiles. So we'll just go ahead and click on this. And you want to make sure that this is set correctly. That does look right for roughly where I'm at. That's asking, so you download a radius in kilometers of what you want. So I probably have a 100 kilometer radius right now. We're going to try going to 200 and let's go ahead and click okay. I just don't want to take too much time downloading these maps, but I did want to show you kind of what that looks like. And you'll be able to see right here, it is doing the downloads. We're going to have to wait on that for a couple of minutes to download. Yep, it's a little slow, but it is moving. Can't remember, I should have checked or unchecked, whichever. I don't need it. You shouldn't re-download tiles necessarily that you've downloaded in the past. And I don't remember if I checked or unchecked that. I didn't even pay that close of attention to it. But unless it's been a, you know, a really long time since you've downloaded your map tiles, there's really no need to re-download what you've already done. Once you do this, the nice thing about Yak is these maps will be available offline. And that's why I always like to download at least my, you know, my area of the country. And I like to actually go out, as long as I've got enough hard drive space, I like to go ahead and download quite a bit. I don't necessarily need the whole United States, but if I was going to be traveling to the west coast, I would go ahead and, and set the center point as somewhere, maybe in Nevada, and go ahead and download those tiles. That way I would have this information offline once I got there. And that's just nice to have in case you don't have internet, you do have a offline map source. So I'm going to hit the pause button right here, wait for this to finish up. And then we will go ahead and, and continue with the tutorial. All right, so it looks like we're about 91% of the way complete. I don't know how long this has taken. I really didn't check the time when we started. But about this, one of the reasons I like to have these portable APRS Digi systems in place and ready to go is when we got to Huntsville Hamfest this year, up on top of the mountain with an HT, we could not get into the local digipeter. So I immediately set up one of my APRS digipeders. I was running a Pi Zero, I think a Yezu FT 65, the same radio we're using today. And in that particular instance, I was using a Digi rig. But I set that up, got the antenna up to about probably 25, 26 feet, something like that. And then everybody was able to get into the local eye gate with just a handheld. So it would go through my Digi which had no internet up on top of the mountain. But it would go through there and then be able to, when it digited, it would get out to the eye gate. So maybe I had done that radius in the past. So maybe I should have went out a little bit further and that may have all been for nothing. Kind of curious, let's just click the zoom in one time. And it does take Yak a couple of minutes to redraw a lot of times. I'm going to click back out one and see if we get any more map during the redraw. Now, so it looks like I'd went out to that distance in the past. So that kind of is what it is. Do I have any bookmarks set? Yep, I've got my hometown set. That's another thing, when you're setting up Yak, go ahead and bookmark different views. You get to a zoom level that you want. And then you just come up to bookmarks and click bookmark this view. You'll give it a name, something that's easy for you to remember or easy for you to recognize. And so I zoom in on various towns and whatnot in my area and then bookmark that particular view. So it's a little quicker to jump to that. All right, so we've got, let's see, we've got the Mobilink running. We've got Yak open. We've got some maps to work with. The next thing we need to do is probably go ahead and start configuring some stuff. Now, right now I'm on 144 390, which is a standard APRS frequency. But I will be changing off of that frequency here in a bit as well. So I'm going to come to configure and expert mode. I typically don't use the wizard. When I'm setting these up, I typically just go in and use the expert mode here. So let's see, the first thing we probably need to set up is a new port. So that's beacons, click on ports. Okay, so right here I'm in the port configure window and we're going to say add a port. And let's see, tell you what, it looks like my network connection here is struggling a little bit. Graphics aren't quite as pretty as they should be, but maybe we can make it go. All right, so right here under port type, I didn't change it. The default was serial TNC and you see this dev RF comm zero right here. So that's what I'm wanting. And then we need to give this a call sign. So we'll use km4AK and I'm going to say dash 3. Now, for right now, we're going to leave transmit disabled. I just want to verify that we can get packets into this system. So let's click save here and see if that, yep, it looks like that enabled and everything is working as it should. So I'm actually going to zoom, oh, wow, that's a, that's me right there. I got a little, looks like a tractor maybe. Let's go to the bookmark view and let's go ahead and jump to my home view. Yep, there's a little tractor right there. I thought I had transmit disabled, but I might have it turned on for something else. We can look in a minute. What I'm going to do right now is I'm on my FT5 HT that's right here close by. And I'm just going to transmit out my beacon. And yep, there we go. So it popped up right on the map. Okay, good. So I know that it is receiving APRS packets. So let's go back in to file and configure and expert mode. And something else I need to do is I need to, I'm terrible to start my notes and then not keep up with them. So we need to add port and that port will be serial TNC. And it will point to dev RF comm zero. And test successful. All right, so we're, we're at that point. Let's see where we're at here. Kind of curious as why that transmitted actually. Doesn't look like I've got anything set there. I don't think I have the digipeter turned on. Well, just this one is enabled, but that's for temp 11. And I don't think I'm running anything temp 11 in this particular setup. Let's look at ports. There's where I have, okay, so yep, it looks like before I was playing with this and I did enable a station beacon for this particular system. And I'd already set the display symbol as a farm tractor. So let's jump over to APRS dot FI. I'm curious if APRS dot FI and we'll go ahead and search for km4AK dash 3. And let's see if this picked up. Today is the 23rd, so that was from yesterday. Okay, not sure exactly what's going on there. I thought I was actually playing with another system yesterday. But I guess because I have transmit disabled, it popped up on the map, but it didn't actually transmit that out. So let's go ahead and go back to our ports. And I'm going to highlight that port. I unselected it, but that's all right. Let's edit that and let's go ahead and enable transmit. And we'll give that a couple of minutes. Let's click save there and let's enable that and close. So now at some point it should go ahead and beacon out our position here. So we'll give that a couple of minutes. I'm actually going to zoom out on this map a little bit. Seeing some other things starting to come in and I want to see if, yep, I do see it. So that SRARC emblem right there, that's an object created by my regular digipeter, the one I run here all the time at the house. I saw that come across on the HT and I was curious if it was showing up here as well. So we're definitely receiving, okay. Let's refresh this screen and let's see if we got a transmit yet out on this. Yeah, so August 23rd at 1:22, that's roughly what time it is. And that is today's date, August 23rd. So it looks like it is transmitting, okay. So let's go ahead, before we start playing with this too much. And I'm going to move my HT off of that frequency. I think we should be able to just go up to about 144 450. Let me move the, the FT 65 that's connected to the Mobilink. Let me move it to 450 as well. All right, so that should move us far enough away from the main APRS frequency so that we can test a couple of things. And let's make sure everything is working like we expect it to before we set up the digipeter. So here is, oh, right down here in the bottom. I'm going to come down here and just send a message. So dash seven, that's my HT's SSID. And we'll just say test from WoE, which is the computer I'm working with here. I should spell it right, but not too worried about it. All right, yep, and you probably heard that dinging in the back and that just showed up on, on my HT. And you can see the acknowledgement right here. So looks like everything is working as it's supposed to be as far as that goes. Let me clear that message on my HT so it doesn't keep dinging at me. Okay, now let's see about setting up this digipeter. So let's go back to file, configure and expert mode again. And it should be pretty easy to get this set up here. Let's try digiped and we're going to enable wide 11 and wide 22. Let's see, default digi paths. I think we can just leave that at default and let's click close there. Now, one thing I would like to see, can I view my raw packets? Let's see what this looks like. All right, yep, there's the raw packets that we're generating. So what I want to do is I want to send another beacon from my HT and let's see if we can figure out if it's definitely transmitting that back out. I'm actually going to hit the transmit button on the HT and watch the FT 65 that's sitting on another table here in the office. And just make sure that it does hear it and then retransmit that. All right, it heard it, but it did not retransmit that. So I don't know if I have something wrong. Or let's see, let's go back to file, configure, expert mode. And let's go in and figure out what I did wrong here. And guys, this is literally the process I go through with all kinds of different videos that I make. I'm sitting here making sure that I know exactly what's going on before we put out one of those, you know, polished tutorial type videos. By the way, something here, this is kind of a side note here. Under transmit, something that's cool is, and I didn't know this for the longest, Yak has a mini web server built into it that you can access. So if you want to watch this update on another computer, you can actually, I would type in the IP address into a browser for this computer and then give it a colon. And you can see right there that this is 8008. So that's the port number. Now, obviously you can change that, but that is the port number. Tell you what, let's just take a look at that real quick. What's the IP address of this machine? I think it's 100. Yep, let's see if we can, let's see if we can see this real quick. Take a little bit of a detour, but 192 168 1 dot 100 colon 8008. And look at that, that's the exact same view. So I'm on my Mac computer right now, but that's the exact same view that I was looking at on the WoE itself. So kind of cool. And by the way, this has got some stuff down here in the bottom. By the way, it auto refreshes, I think every 15 or 20 seconds. But there's some links right down here at the bottom where you can click like messages and you can see some different things. This looks like some other messages that we heard a while ago while we were on the main APRS frequency. Here's where I sent that test from WoE. And here's the acknowledgement that the WoE heard when it came back. Bulletin board is going to be blank because we don't have anything. Then if we go to stations and objects and, and guys, I'm literally, I'm working in a web browser right here. You can see all of the different stations and objects that we've heard. And then of course you can go back to that map view. So a little bit of a side note there. Let's get back to trying to figure out why this is not working on the digipeter. So let's go back to the digipeter. I've got it enabled there. What is the issue here? Let's go check our port. So I thought I enabled, whoops, clicked wrong. This seems a little finicky with where you click to get to those tabs. Let's edit that. Did I not, I thought I enabled transmit. Yep, transmit is enabled. I know the port's good because we're hearing from it and I was able to transmit that message a while ago. So that's not it. Oh, digiped's for port. I probably need to enable both of these as well. Maybe I didn't need to enable them under the digipee tab. We're going to enable these. I'm going to click save and close there. And let's watch these packets and see what happens. Let's go ahead and retransmit another beacon. Let's see, I am on the right frequency. Yep, 144 450, which is our test frequency. Let's hit the beacon transmit again and watch. All right, that time I did see the, the transmit on the FT 65 light up. So that is definitely working. Now, out of curiosity, because I would have really thought that you needed the digipee turned on under the digipee tab, why you have to turn it on? Do you have to turn it on in both places or just one? Let's disable it here since I know it's working with the other one. And let's just go ahead and disable that temp 112. And let's close that. So now, all right, now let's go ahead and try to transmit another beacon and see if it still transmits. Interesting, so it did not retransmit that beacon. I think it should, maybe it was too quick. Sometimes the digipedors, if they, they hear the same signal too close together or the, I'm sorry, the same packet too close together, they may not retransmit it. So I don't know if that's it. Let's go back in here and try this again. So expert mode. Let's go to the digipee tab and let's enable all of those again. Close and we'll go ahead and try it. All right, so beaconing from the HT. And it transmitted, the, the digipeter retransmitted that packet. Can we actually see that happening in the raw packets? Don't know. So I don't know if these are incoming or outgoing. It just says APRS source. It doesn't actually show it digipeding, I don't think, in this. Shoot, let's try it again and see if two different entries show up. Oh, you know what? Let me make this a little bit bigger so we can see the timestamps on these. Yeah, it looks like it's receiving it, but it doesn't show it retransmitting it. And that's one of the things in Direwolf that I like. If you're watching Direwolf, when, if you're using it for a digipeter, it will show you the incoming and the outgoing packet, outgoing packets on that. If you've got color turned on or kind of this pinkish color. But in Yak, it doesn't look like you get to see both of those. So let's do another transmit. The digi just transmitted. And yeah, I'm not seeing it. So not sure what the difference is there. I wonder if I close this. I would think that was a live update. Pretty sure that would be. Let's look at the raw packets again. Yep, it's still showing that 3228 timestamp there. So not sure exactly what's going on there, but now I know that you definitely have to have it cut on in both places. So it looks like we've got this thing working completely, looking at expert mode. So what, what I ended up, and I need to make my notes here in just a second as well. In fact, let's do that before we go back into this. So turn on digipee in ports. And then turn on digipee in digipee tab. All right, let's save our notes. Oh, you know what? I don't think I've ever unsaved documents. So digipee notes. And we'll just save that to the desktop. All right, now back in Yak. So what we ended up having to do was under digipee, we had to turn it on here. And I just enabled all three. I probably don't need that temp 11, but you definitely want wide 11 and wide 22 enabled. So I ended up enabling it there. And then under, that is really weird the way, I can't click on that exactly. Under ports, under that serial TNC type port, I clicked here. You need to make sure that you have transmit enabled. And then you also have to check those here as well. Most of the other stuff, I think I just left it default. So there's not a whole lot to do for this. But now we have more options going forward. Where we can use either a Digi rig type sound card or if all I had or if all I had with me was the MobiLink TNC, we could use it as well. Now, it would be interesting to also try this with a USB cable instead of doing it over Bluetooth. Because the, the downside to using Bluetooth is you're going to have to make certain that the TNC stays charged. I've ran these for probably twenty-four hours at a time over field day. And they will make it at least that long, but I don't know exactly uh what the, the timeframe would be. Uh, how long that battery would last, what that timeframe is. I've never run one to uh a complete discharge state. But uh, yeah, so that, that's it. That looks like everything we need to do. I guess we'll save the USB type video for another one. I am curious uh what you think about this style of video and just kind of watching me work through the process to try to get something going. Um, if you like this or if you don't like it, I don't care which, uh, leave a comment down below and uh let me know what you thought of it. Uh, just something new I wanted to try. Anyway, that's going to be the end of it. Uh, appreciate you guys tuning in today. Leave us a thumbs up if you think about it before you click off of this. We'll see you on the next one. Until then, seven-three.